Welcome to another meeting of the Lorain County Commissioners broadcast exclusively on your Lorain County Community College Education Station. The Lorain County Commissioners cordially invite you to see the meetings live and in person every Thursday morning. The meetings are located in the Lorain County Administration Building located at 226 Middle Avenue in downtown Alariah. The meetings start at 9:30 a.m. on most weeks. Now, enjoy the meeting.
Our pledge to rights to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Moore is on vacation this morning, so I guess I'm it.
By default.
By default.
Okay, any resolutions? I need a motion to approve the job and family services bills repayment.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
There are no advances or repayments this morning. Requisitions?
Well, so moved, but I did call Dan Billman in regards to the one with regarding the forklift truck for computer. It's, I think it said for a computer, and I thought that was kinda strange for $835, but it's not. It's for the computer program that they have where they're bringing these computers in. So there are several computers. So that was answered, but then there was 1554 and 1586. 54 was for a digital camera. I think the I.D.D., I.T. department already has one, and I don't understand why it can't be shared.
The digital camera that I believe is on the requisition forms is for our internet purchasing and bidding, that program that we're putting together.
Auction program.
Right, the auction, then we're gonna be doing other stuff with the internet. I know we have one at Community Development, I believe it's a combined video digital camera, but I would like to yield to Ms. Newton on this particular issue, if you would address it.
Yes, you're buying purchasing directly. That camera, Mary Jo, is gonna be used so often, and I know the one, I checked with Nancy then with the I.T. one, they use it so often for the dog pound that there's gonna be times that we're both using them at the same time and it's not gonna work out, because I'm going around to different departments doing the digital pictures to do the online auction, and it's gonna be an ongoing thing. So with that and them doing the dog pound pictures, you almost need to, to do what we have to do.
Okay, I'm not so certain that we did. Have you tried it? Have you tried sharing?
No, we haven't tried sharing. The camera that we need is just a real cheap one, 'cause what happens is, if you use the camera that they have, and I talked with the vendor that we're doing business with the online auction, is that sometimes if you take the pictures and you have someone bidding on something, the picture won't show up because their computer cannot handle it, and so we won't have the people showing. So what we did, and what they suggested was just to get a cheap camera to do it so that when people pull it up, they can see the picture good, because if you use a more expensive camera, there's sometimes their computer can't handle, and we won't be getting the bids like we should be getting, because they're not gonna be able to see the picture, because they're not gonna be able to pull the picture up off of a better camera. So this is a cheaper camera to do what we have to do, and that's the online, because we haven't even started yet, because I can't, I did check with the I.T. department, I checked with Ernie Smith on that, to see exactly what they had, if it was too powerful for us, powerful for us, if it was just right for, and it's gonna be too powerful for us.
I think I'm a little confused, Devon. A more expensive camera should be better shots.
No, because the people wouldn't have a more expensive.
Let me try this.
Okay.
The lower-cost cameras do not shoot with the deep resolution that the higher-cost cameras do. So you have a, you have a, the picture has far fewer pixels in it, and it takes up far less space on a download. While the quality of the picture is acceptable for internet use, it's more easily transferred as a JPG file because of its lower density and lower quality. What usually happens with some people that are trying to access a website with high-resolution graphics or pictures is that it takes so long to download the page that they, their computer defaults because it times out. So that's why sometimes a less costly camera will serve the purpose. Although on the more expensive ones, normally you can reduce the resolution and scale down the pixels with a program. So I'm not so sure that we may not be able to do that.
Well, what happened was, because I tried it with a department, and I had to keep calling the company because the camera was not, wasn't talking to their system. So what they had to do was, they had to go, and I had to fax, email them the pictures, and then they...
Why don't, let me make a recommendation here, 'cause I'm a bit confused now. Normally, we would have a graphics program that could convert a picture once it's taken into several different formats. Photoshoot.
Microsoft Photo.
Right. And normally, when you open the picture, you get to save it, and there's several different formats you can save it. It sounds to me like we have a format issue here rather than a size, file size, which was what I initially thought maybe it was a density, file size issue. So why don't you and I just talk, and then we can revisit this next week, if that's okay with you, Commissioner.
Yeah, and in the meantime, would you try sharing the other camera that they have? Because if they can use it for photographs for the dogs, and it's working...
We're probably gonna need more than one camera. I don't wanna mislead you, Commissioner, but let me take a look at what, I wanna make sure we're resolving the problem before we go ahead with the purchase, and then we'll come back and we can talk more, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay. Thanks, Yvonne.
And then on 1586, there was three quotes, but all of them were for out of the county.
What was the issue, Commissioner?
1586, what was that, Roxy?
Do you have it, Betty?
Yeah, I can give it to you.
158602, under Commissioners, $3,333 for a switch module, is my solution. I pulled that.
There was a question that you had included, and then there was a letter from Ernie that was attached explaining the need for it. His comments were that it was a Cisco switch for the fifth floor to accommodate growth, and without it, the fifth will not have network parts available to them for their people. That's what his note did.
Thank you, Commissioner, 'cause my last recollection was that I pulled that resolution.
Okay. So does it need to be pulled, then?
I'm assuming if it was recommended by the I.T. folks that they needed. I pulled it because it came up without an explanation. I wasn't, I didn't know what it was.
I think the explanation was attached, and then they sent it back.
My only question is, why aren't we getting some quotes from within the county? I'm sure that there are people in the county that can do this work.
I think that we need to find an answer to that question. You know how I feel about purchasing within the county, so why don't we hold that till next week, and let's take a look at it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
That's all I had?
No. Okay, so...
Just those two?
Commissioner Vassie, you moved, and...
With those two exceptions, which we will be holding.
Okay, 1554 and 1586, right?
Yes, and, yes, that's it.
Okay, all right, I'll second.
Anybody's question? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Approving bills for payment?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
No.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Like to authorize various personal actions as indicated on the summary for employees within the jurisdiction of Lorain County Commissioners.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Under Auditor's Department, number 10, we need to authorize refund to Midview Board of Education in the amount of $1,340 for incorrect conveyance fee paid on a purchase of real estate. This amount was charged in error as Midview Board of Education are tax exempt. The county auditor has reviewed and recommends approval.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, the Community Development Department, number 11, to approve and enter into loan agreement between the Board of Commissioners and Hugh Irvin of North Coast Construction of Ohio and Lorain in the amount of $12,583.77 for the refinancing of a now $9,583.77 Lorain County area-wide microenterprise loan program, and to lend an additional $3,000 to purchase tools and equipment. Need to authorize the Vice President to execute on behalf of the Board.
So moved.
I'll second.
Discussion. Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Under Domestic Relations Court, number 12, to approve and enter into agreement between the Board of Commissioners and Justice Benefits Incorporated from Dallas, Texas, to assist the court in claiming monies by executing paperwork and monitoring required for reimbursement through federal 4E monies. JBI's fee is 22% of all revenues collected, and if the court does not collect, JBI is not paid. Domestic Relations Court has reviewed and recommends approval. The county prosecutor's office has reviewed, also has approved as to form. Need to authorize the Vice President to execute on behalf of the Board.
So moved.
I'll second.
Discussion. Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
The Board of Mental Health, number 13, we need to authorize the appointment of Timothy Williams as a member on the Board of Mental Health to fill the unexpired term of Mona Atlee Bowe, who has resigned. The term will be effective October 3, 2002, expiring June 30, 2005.
Also move.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Under the Sheriff's Department, number 14, we need to approve change order number one to South Shore Electric of Alariah, Ohio, in the amount of $3,957 for the Lorain County Correction Facility. The change order is for the adjusting and repositioning existing electrical conduit in conflict with roof openings to disconnect and reconnect electrical feed to facilitate re-roofing and to extend feeder to revised location for condenser. Funds are available in the JL renovation account. Lorain County Sheriff has reviewed and recommends approval. Need to authorize the Vice President to execute on behalf of the Board.
So moved.
I'll second.
Discussion. Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Number 15, we need to just receive and file the annual report submitted by Lorain County Sheriff's Office of all fines and costs collected by the Sheriff's Office for the period September 12, 2001, through September 11, 2002. Said report is being filed pursuant to Ohio Vice Code Section 311.16. The total amount of fines and costs collected are in the amount of $153,718.86.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Also, item number 16, Sheriff's Department, to receive and file the annual report prepared and submitted by Lorain County Sheriff pursuant to Ohio Vice Code Section 325.31. On the fees due and unpaid for more than one year prior to January 1, 2001, in the amount of $115,553.82, the amount of $17,327, which represents the unpaid fees from juvenile court for the year 2001, will be forgiven. As noted in this report, fees in the cases entitled "State of Ohio Versus" make up the majority of unpaid fees, which are criminal cases, et cetera, and they comprise the bulk of the unpaid fees which are included in the total of this report.
So moved.
I'll second.
Discussion. Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Under the Workforce Development Agency, item number 17, we need to approve and enter into contract between the Board of Commissioners, the Workforce Development Agency, and the Greater St. Matthew Church of Lorain, Ohio, in the amount of $78,603.45 to perform the Genesis Project to provide job preparation and employability training to young men in school and out of school between the ages of 14 and 21. This program will begin October 7, 2002, terminating June 30, 2003, and funding is available through the Workforce Investment Act.
Madam Chair, I would like Mr. Cordez to expound on this, but I will vote in favor of it. I mean, I'll move in favor of it.
Okay.
Will you second?
I'll second.
Discussion.
I'd just like, you gotta tell us a little bit about what's going on. I've got you sleeping!
Well...
This is our interview for the day.
Now, this issue, Mr. Ogilvy and I talked about it some time ago, and there was some changes we wanted in this contract for the youth services. This program under the youth services is a more mentoring program to encourage, we was gonna say teens, but we go up to age 21, to be able to provide them encouragement and guidance to either getting jobs or retaining jobs, and how to stay in the workplace. It's necessary that we provide that kind of guidance, because these are some of the years where lack of that guidance causes them not to develop good work skills and good workplace skills. And one of the basic skills is to go to work on a continuing basis. Normally, you'll achieve success in the workplace if you learn those skills very early on. So that's what this program is helping to do, and this is recommended by the Youth Council. They've done a fantastic job for the county, and they continue to provide excellent programs out there, so I would encourage the Board to support this.
Thank you. I just thought it needed to be said, because I think it's a, something needs to be done, and we're addressing that in some specific areas. That's why I wanted you to comment on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Jim, what I'd like to see is reports from some of the agencies that we contract with, to see just how many jobs that these people receive, and if they, and how many they keep after they receive the training.
Okay, Commissioner, you gotta stop reading my mind now.
How many, you know, if they keep these jobs after they're trained, if they even get a job after they're trained.
One of the issues we had with this particular contract, which wasn't significant, but we had to correct, was monitoring the access to the program, the people served, and reporting ongoing, and we're monitoring this contract on a quarterly basis for the outcomes. So I'll provide...
Yeah, not just this one, but there are others also that provide training.
Right.
We should monitor those also.
We have recently incorporated a process, two things have changed at WDA. One is that youth services is now a centralized intake process through the One Stop. Before, it wasn't like that, all the vendors were conducting their own intake. Mr. Ogilvy and myself felt that there may be a little bias towards one's program, and they were kinda snatching people off the street and saying, "You need to be ex," and that may not be in a good fit for the individuals being served. So, beginning with July 1, we met with the One Stop vendor, and we incorporated a centralized intake whereby the people at the One Stop will do the evaluation of the individual service plans, and then they will be dispersed to the various vendors that best meet the needs from that evaluation. So that's an improvement, I believe, because we're not gonna try to fit a square peg into a round hole. We're gonna find out when the peg is round and put it in a round hole, so they get the best services, and we maximize our dollars. The second thing we were lacking was a continued follow-up, and in fact, that came out in one of the audits, and we are working on a follow-up that, so we can follow these people after they're entered the workplace and after the first year of gaining services from the WDA. The problem is, TANF monies and workforce monies, WIA monies, they're all on a yearly basis, but they require a two-year process. That is, you know, you're in the system for the first year, and then they require a follow-up. Nobody's giving us money to do the follow-up, and we're trying to come up with a system where we can use additional dollars or fund contracts in such a way that we have money in a second year to do reporting and follow-up on some of these individuals. So while clearly we need that data, and it's important to gauge the success of the program, we have to figure out how to apply the dollars to be able to do that follow-up. So we're working on that, and I will give you what we have.
I can give you more information on that, too, because we're talking about that in Columbus. With all this money that's going back to the state, it's not just Lorain County, but throughout the state of Ohio, they're having the same problem, and the state is questioning this. So if we need some changes, please give me the information.
Sure. I think that, I just read that they had that meeting down in Columbus. They keep referring to the seven WIA's that are working in the state, the federal government does, and we happen to be one of those seven WIA's that is working in the state. The federal government's taking quite an exception to what the state's doing in the other 81 counties.
Correct.
I'm pleased to say we're one of the counties that has received recognition as doing it correctly and spending all of our dollars. The second issue, if you're down there and you're participating, I would ask that, one of the major problems we have is we have dollars for training of disenfranchised workers. We have dollars for trainings for people who need to enter the workplace and haven't been there. What we don't have is dollars for workers that are working now, for companies to keep them working. A dollar of prevention is worth $10 of cure when they're unemployed. We are not able to direct our dollars to companies to say, to use it as an economic development tool, to use it as a retention tool, and that's what's lacking in those dollars in the state.
Well, years ago, when it was ETA, what they did then was to offer an incentive to the employer. So in other words, if the wages were $4 an hour, for example, they gave the employer maybe half of the wages for a certain length of time, provided that the employer kept that employee.
But see, under the Ohio Works First Program, you gotta get the job first before you can do that, and it's like the chicken and egg, and things have, while they're still clearly looking at those issues, things have changed to the point where it's becoming much more difficult to do. One of the things that I've talked to Mr. Totilio on, and Mr. Twining, who is on the WDA now, is we need to go out with these companies that they may be sitting on the fringe, where a few dollars towards training, they'll be able to direct dollars towards retooling or buying new equipment if we can provide training dollars to keep those workers employed. It's, I know we need to worry about the unemployed, and we need to work with them to develop new job skills and identify those job skills, they need to be successful at getting jobs, but we also need to be concerned with keeping people in jobs, and that's another tenet, I believe, of what the government was looking at when it designed these programs. The state is so busy squabbling over this massive WIA area with 81 counties in it, and how it's supposed to work with the federal government, they're losing sight of the fact that we need to develop, we should be moving past that. We should be in the second and third stage of development of how we're using these dollars. We're stalled in the first stage because the state can't get its act together. We're there, we're ready. We're ready to jump on to the next one.
Yeah, we're hearing that, too.
Okay, so I'd love to sit down and talk with you and send some stuff to Columbus.
Yeah, let's do that. Okay, thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
You can take the vote.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair, Mrs. Vassie?
Are you still here?
I don't know. Yes, I am, thanks.
Okay, reports, comments, Mr. Cordez, Administrator?
I think I said enough.
Okay. Assistant County Press here, Mr. Ennis?
I need to have a short executive session with Commissioners, one involving litigation and the other personnel issue.
Okay. Commissioners' report.
I have nothing today.
I have nothing as well.
Okay. Any old business?
I have none.
None here.
New business?
None here.
Board of Correspondents?
Madam Chair, I'd like to move that the reading be waived, but before I just do that, I want to call attention to item number three on here, the veterans at the 2002 Lorain County Fair. They sent us a pictorial booklet. They have a building at the fair, used to be the electrical building a couple of years ago, and there's a flag painted on the side of it, and they took lots of pictures, and they put it into a booklet form, and it's really, it's a nice, and if anybody's interested, Roxanne has it, and she could share it with you.
Okay, thank you.
Other than that, I'll move that we waive the reading.
Second.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Public comment?
Is there anyone here that would like to address the board?
Elizabeth Romicks, R.U.A.M.I.C.S., Oberlin. Mrs. Johnson could not be here today for personal reasons. Good, not bad, but I think that if she were, she might have spoken to the effect that it's very important that some of these agencies, as Mrs. Vassie was mentioning, have a kind of ongoing monitoring, particularly the recent to-do about Mrs. Taylor Carter and that agency. It sort of seems like the Ohio Turnpipe Commission, Senator Armbruster being on the Oversight Committee and not being aware of what was going on, and so on. It would maintain or help to restore public confidence in these agencies were some sort of ongoing monitoring by those people responsible for it occurred, and that there would be occasional reports, hopefully positive, and not have things suddenly explode into the air and so forth.
Robert Kish, Seven Seas, at Lorain County Jurns. The opposite of talking isn't listening, it's waiting. I wonder how many people who do not or cannot attend these meetings view the broadcast, which come on at noon on Saturdays and Monday at 11:00 p.m.? I do not know how many people are not registered to vote either, but if 50% of those who are registered turn out, it means that those who are elected are elected by only 26% of those registered, not the population. There's a quarter million people in the county. There was a letter today in the Journal by Dorothy McCarty. October 7 is the last day to register to vote in the November 5 general election. If you are not yet registered to vote, you can do so at various places: Lorain County Board of Elections, the Vocational School, Ohio Bureau of Motor Vehicles, or any public library. What it doesn't say is what I spoke of last time. You do not have to go to the booth to vote. If you register, you can vote absentee ballot due to age, sickness, unable to be in the community. But out of a quarter million people, I don't know how many people will actually vote. Of course, some of those are children, I know they can't vote. But the more people we turn out, the more people will be participating in their own future, because decisions are made. Today, we had nine people here. We're down to, including me, seven people in attendance. That is a miniscule amount of the people in the county. Left unsaid, there are provisions available for the elderly to vote by absentee ballot. After viewing the film of the LCCAA, I noted volunteers in one of these segments, assisting people, the elderly, or those unable to cope due to age, income. A marriage of job skills, I think, I don't know, I'm sure Mr. Cordez recognizes the abbreviation OJT, on the job training. We are training these people for jobs at various, as we spoke earlier here. Why not marry the two? Get these people to learn job skills that are appropriate to assist in the rehabilitation of some of these facilities that are needed, whether it be a ramp, like I showed in that film, or just simple caulking, whatever it takes. But these people will be learning job skills. It's not as if they were working on a new house and they messed up, "Oh, my God, we're gonna fire him because he made a mistake. You can do it over again." Put these people together, marry them, on the job training. We have the Vocational School, some of the people there are learning skills. The first time you do, you learn more by making mistakes than you do by being it right. So let's do it right for Lorain County. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. You just reminded me, I have some voter registration forms in the office. I think we'll put them downstairs in the lobby. More people walk through the lobby than they do my office.
We have them up here, too, don't we?
Yes, we do.
We have them, Commissioners General.
Well, I may need some more, 'cause I think I only have about five, but those can be mailed in also. They don't have to be returned to the department where they're signed or filled out. They can be mailed in to the Board of Elections.
Bob, just for your own application, I'm gonna find out exactly, because it's interesting, and we should know coming into the election, but I think we have around 90,000 registered voters, between 90,000 and 100,000 in Lorain County. I thought that was a number I knew a couple of years ago. Madam Cook, do you remember what that number was at all?
No, I don't right now.
Why don't we find out? Would you call the Board of Elections, find out the number of registered voters, and then Would you call the Board of Elections, find out the number of registered voters, and then we can let the people know next week how many are registered in Lorraine County?
Okay. Is there anyone else?
To reference that, Mr. Cordez, that's registered. How many people are there that are registered that can be registered and should be registered? If they really, I mean, this griping about taxes going up is fine, but if you had 100 people in here today, it would be a different meeting completely. I think so.
You talk about taxes. You should hear what they're talking about at the state level.
Well, look at Lorraine.
And only increasing sales tax, cigarette tax, liquor tax, property tax, every tax you can think of. They're talking about increasing them.
The less people working...
It just blows your mind.
The less people working, including those being laid off, are not paying taxes, they're consuming taxes. It can only go upward.
Right, Bob. You know what? And I may be inaccurate. I may be talking about the amount of people that were voting in the last election, so I'll need to get that number from the Board of Elections. But it's something we probably should know, how many people are actually registered in the county.
I think there was a low turnout in the last election. Okay, thanks again. Anyone else? Okay, then we...
May I, Chair? Move we go into executive session for the purposes as outlined by the Assistant Prosecutor, noting that we have a 10:30 public hearing, I believe, on...
I will second that, and we will be back at 10:30.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
We have a 10:30 public hearing, and that is the amendment to the FY-01 CDBG Small Cities Program. Kelly, are you prepared for this now?
Yes.
Okay.
Good morning, everybody. We are here today to conduct the second of two public hearings for the amendment of CDBG fiscal year 2001, to inform the public of an amendment to the grant agreement approved, which was approved September of 2001, and to take comments regarding this amendment and to answer any questions regarding this amendment. The purpose of this hearing is to provide information on the state of Ohio fiscal 2001 Community Development Block Grant Program and the amendments we are requesting for this application. In addition, the county held the first public hearing for this grant on April 12 of 2001 to explain the CDBG guidelines to persons, organizations, and officials throughout the county, and to establish what needs to exist in our communities that can be resolved through the use of block grant funds. In June of 2001, the second public hearing was held to inform the public what specific projects were submitted to the state within the CDBG formula application. The amendment is as follows. Activity number nine, which is home repair, the original grant amount was $87,900. We would like to amend it to add an additional $12,100, which would bring a new balance of $100,000. Activity number 11, which is general admin, the original grant amount was $52,800. We would like to reduce that by $12,000, bringing the new balance to $40,700. The Lorraine County Community Development Department had increased the awareness of the availability of funds for the home repair activity, which has in turn increased the number of requests from Lorraine County residents. In addition, the department has received favorable bidders who are willing to do this type of work in a timely manner. The purpose of this program is to assist home-occupied residents with emergency-related repairs to their home, for example, foundation repairs, sewer tie-in assistance, leaking roofs, replacements of furnace. I have also provided a list of the residents that we have helped currently to the Board of Commissioners. It's a list of 18 residents, which comes to 41 occupants, and the dollar amount spent to date is $78,528.